Good evening, everyone, and thanks for joining us this evening. We ask that you please rise as Pastor Jim Johnson of Calvary Free Lutheran Church leads us into our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we have much to be thankful for as we think about the rains and the sunshine that we've received this spring and the beauty of what we can enjoy as we live here in Fergus Falls. I thank you too for your provision for our city government through our mayor and council members, administration, and staff. Lord, I pray for your blessing on each one of them and their families. Help us here in Fergus Falls, all of us, to be able to put into practice the principles in your word, to be quick to hear, slow to speak, slow to become angry, even in difficult situations. And, Lord, I pray for this council meeting that you would give understanding and guidance in decision-making. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation that is God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:30. A May 20th, 2024, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Rachel with House Speaker Hix?
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item of business this evening, we will open the floor for the open forum. Anyone from the public wishing to address the county, I'm sorry, address the city for any issue not on the agenda, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will move along to the approval of the agenda. I believe Councilmember Hix has asked for items seven and nine. Is that correct, Anthony?
Correct.
Seven and nine to be removed from the consent agenda. Would anyone like anything else?
Number eight.
Number seven, eight, and nine removed. Anything else, Andrew, to change from the agenda?
No other changes.
Hearing no other changes, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda.
On leave, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Councilmember Cramire. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings, tonight there's a final cost hearing for public improvement 6080, the sidewalk driveway improvement project for 2023. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Ivaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of this council. Yes, I just want to give you a little bit of background before I request that you open up the final cost hearing for public improvement 6080. That's a 2020-2023 sidewalk program final cost hearing. This is 100% petition program utilized by property owners at various locations in the city. Individual final assessment rolls and the rates and terms were mailed to all participants prior to this hearing and also along with a notice in a daily journal. Like I mentioned, this is a 2023 sidewalk and driveway improvement program. Location is miscellaneous areas throughout the city. Today is going to be the hearing date, May 20th, 2024. Proposed interest rate is 5.8%. And that, depending on the variation, evaluation, that's the term is also contingent on that, which is also included in the new packet as well. So the final cost of this project is $50,398.43. As noted, the city budget's approximately $30,000 a year for this project. The assessed share with this program is equals to $24,989.50. I have not received any objections prior to this hearing date, so I will request you open up the final cost hearing for public improvement 6080. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we will do that at this time. Public hearing is open for the sidewalk driveway improvement project 2023, public improvement 6080. Anyone wishing to speak to that issue, please step to the lectern. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and it's back to the council. We will be looking for a resolution adopting the final cost assessment for project 6080.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions for city staff? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no bids to ward this evening under petitions and communications. This evening, we have a proclamation declaring May 19th through the 25th as Public Works Week. And I will read this proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Fergus Falls. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for our citizens, civic leaders, and children in Fergus Falls to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing investment and interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Benjamin Shire, the mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby designate the week of May 20, I'm sorry, May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week in the city of Fergus Falls, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. So with that, I'd just like to say to Guy Taylor, our public works director, thank you for all the work that you do and the team that you do and just that list of, I mean, sometimes in public works, we take it for granted that when we turn the water on, the water comes out and is safe and, but shouldn't go unnoticed, and this is a week to recognize that. So thank you to you and all your team for all the work that you do.
Thank you. We have a really good team.
Tom?
And I would like to say thank you for the slideshow. I thought that was, that was a nice touch. So, good to see.
Thanks, Lynn. I missed it, but heard it was good.
It was really good.
I'll watch it later.
She'll put it out on Twitter later on, maybe.
All right, under the consent agenda, there are six items remaining if we remove items seven, eight, and nine. Would someone like to offer a resolution accepting those six items?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution approving the sidewalk sales policy. And I believe, Anthony, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, my, my comment was on the sidewalk seating areas. Under one eligibility, a business that regularly and customarily sells food or drink may operate an outdoor seating area on a public sidewalk. And I wonder if we can add language that says with the appropriate food and beverage licensing. So that, because technically...
Sure.
You know, I know Clara was saying that you, you know, that was an extension of the liquor license to serve it on the sidewalk, so.
You offer a resolution without amendment?
I would offer a resolution with that addition.
With that addition? Thank you. Anthony, something like to second that? Thank you. Jim, discussion? Staff, see any reason that that's... Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution approving the street closures policy. Scott, did you have a...
Okay, sorry. You had, you had number eight, did you?
Yeah.
I'm afraid so. We'll get to nine in a moment, but for eight, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and send it back to staff for some further clarification. And so with that, I'll just make the motion to table it, and then I can, if there's a second, then I can go into further conversation.
Certainly.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. A motion to table in a second.
The, one of the specifics in this policy has to do with getting the approval of 75% of the residents or the businesses in a particular block. And I think just from a procedural point of view, it'd be very difficult to do. And so I think we need to take a look at how that would be done. And there's probably some other questions as far as how this is actually written up that could come up in a conversation in committee, but that one in particular, to me, just seems real problematic. And so until we kind of sort that out, I'd like to see this tabled for further review.
Certainly. Anthony?
I equally headed that part circled, because I was thinking like downtown, does that mean you've got to get every resident in a flat, an apartment, as well as every business? Because that, that would be a lot of people, and, and some of them would be more challenging to get hold of than others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll ask staff to bring that back to a committee of the whole for some further guidance and input from us. Is that fair enough?
That'd be my motion, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
I'd be fine with that.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Scott. Item number nine is a motion declaring the National Resource Advisory Committee as the city's green team. Anthony, you had a question or comment on that?
Obviously, it says that the, the city has had a greens team obviously since 2015, but, you know, they projects they identify that feel would be worthwhile for the community, building and lighting, land use, transportation, environmental management, and resilient economic and community development. And I just wondered, like, you know, how much time and, and resource does this team have? What's that sort of like the timeline? And, you know, what exactly are they going to deliver back to the city? You know, and, and is this kind of a duplication of kind of other work? We, we have a community development manager, and we have an economic, you know, team that we support in Greater Fergus Falls, and now we, now we're kind of suggesting that we have another team that starts to focus on those two aspects. So I was looking for clarification of how all these different parties are going to work together. And what they're going to, what's the outcome and what's the timeline?
So this green team, Mr. Hix, is just a dreaming team. They will come up with ideas based on some bullet points that are detailed in the Green Business Development Plan and Green Step Cities, and then they would further those on to Greater Fergus Falls or whatever economic development group should be referred to. They spend an hour a month on their work. Some of them probably do a little more than that outside of the committee meeting, but it's not looking to replace Greater Fergus Falls or any other economic development group.
Right, thank you.
As part of the Green Step City, is that correct?
Right. It's the fifth step in the steps, and it'll be a while before we get to that point.
Right.
Since we're on step two, and it's been nine years.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I might, I might be.
You don't want to jump right into this.
Yeah. Yeah, tread cautiously. I will make the motion to...
Thanks, Anthony.
As I understand it, too, within that Green Step Cities program, part of qualifying for certain things as you go through this process or that process is that you just need to have an identified team. So you had, you got to be able to check the box and say, yes, we've got it. It's kind of like some of the things that we go through for bicycle and pedestrian advisory or whatever it might be. As long as you have an identified group, you can check the box, and so it doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah, and also I think that the Natural Resource Advisory Committee is also, you know, as they've progressed through the years, they're asking themselves, what is their role and how can they be useful? And if this is a way that some of them have some expertise, that they could bring recommendations, I think it's a potentially a beneficial thing. So, thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we will look for a resolution declaring a vacancy for the third ward city council seat, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Brent Thompson submitted his letter of resignation back on May 10th, effective Saturday, May 11th. In that letter, he indicated he'd be moving outside of the city limits and is therefore ineligible to serve. That is one reason to declare vacancy as listed in the city charter. So the action before you tonight is to pass a resolution declaring that vacancy, which the charter states shall be declared by resolution from the council. A couple more details related to the actual position. That seat is set to expire at the end of this year, so the seat will be on the election in November. So if the temporary replacement will serve in that capacity, if they wish to continue, they would have to stand for election in November. As I mentioned, the charter gives us guidance on vacancies related to council seats, which states, and I'll just quote a section of 2.04 pertaining to vacancies, that the council shall by resolution declare such vacancy to exist and shall forthwith appoint an eligible person to fill the same until the next regular municipal election. The charter, however, doesn't give guidance as to how that person should be appointed or what that replacement process looks like. So that, to that end, back in 2017, the Charter Commission approached the city council and suggested that they have a policy in place should this circumstance ever occur. It last happened in 2015, which is why I think 2017 was kind of a logical time for that conversation to have come forward. And as part of that 2017 process, the Charter Commission recommended a policy to the city council, which ultimately the city council adopted back in, I believe it's August of So using that policy as a guide for us, we've put together a proposed timeline to look at filling that vacancy. And I'll just maybe real quickly talk about what the policy is and then talk about more specifics related to that. So it's kind of a seven or eight-step policy. Step one, a situation arises that constitutes a vacancy, which we got with the resignation letter. Step two is to declare vacancy by resolution, which is the action before you this evening. Step three is advertising the vacant position. Step four is holding sessions to conduct interviews in an open session of the city council. Applicants will be allowed an allotted period of time to talk about themselves, their qualifications, and why they're interested in the process, and then the council will have the ability to ask questions of potential applicants or applicants. Step five is to discuss after the interviews, the candidates in an open session. And step six is for the council to appoint somebody to fill that vacant position by resolution. Should a council member receive votes through a resolution, that individual will be sworn in by the city attorney and take their seat immediately. And then the final step procedurally is just informing all of the other candidates how that process played out. So with that process or policy in mind, I've laid out the following timeline, and the council has the ability to, to weigh in on this, but I would like consensus this evening, if possible. We're suggesting that tonight is when we declare the vacancy by resolution. May 25th, which is this upcoming Saturday, we would publish the vacancy and information in the Daily Journal, and that proposed publication was part of your packet. So it'll be fairly simple but straightforward. June 11th, we're proposing a 4:00 PM deadline for interested applicants to submit their materials and statement of interest. June 13th, which is a Thursday, is when the packet goes out to the council and the public for the June 17th meeting. All submitted materials will be considered public and will be included in that packet. And then we're suggesting that June 17th, prior to the city council meeting in a work session or special session, that the council conducts public interviews of interested parties. Depending on the number of interested parties, I guess will be depending on when we set that meeting, so we can ensure that we're done for our 5:30 regular council meeting. And then I would suggest if the council's prepared to appoint the new member the same evening by resolution, have the discussion and appoint, the reason being because the policy states that they take their seat immediately. We will know that all the candidates would be in attendance that evening, and that may not be the case if we wait two weeks or, or some certain period of time. The reality is, this entire process is a public process and is going to play out in public. All of the materials, like I mentioned, all of the conversations, and ultimately the decision. So the council is, like I said in my memo, in control of that timeline, but it would be nice to have some sort of consensus so we can get the vacancy published in the newspaper, lay out expectations of interested parties, and have deadlines in place. So the, the main action, Your Honor, this evening is to approve the resolution declaring the vacancy, and then I would ask for discussion pertaining to that timeline.
So first, we will look for a resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Jim? Second. Laura, thank you. There's a, that's a resolution declaring a vacancy for the third ward city council Do we want to have discussion on the, the resolution or, or the time or the procedure to fill it? I guess we'll just, you can have the, any conversations on the process right now.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
I guess, I, you know, I remember when that happened some years ago, and I, my feeling, this is just my feeling, I guess, is I would like to see the people be able to vote who they want to represent them. And this was just today, I received this. It was handed to me by a person in the third ward, which is a initiative petition proposing an ordinance for a special election in the event of a vacancy in the council. I don't know how this is supposed to be worded or anything like this. Like I said, it was given to me. And it does have, it has five signatures on it. I do know that something like that does need five signatures, and it's supposed to go to Andrew, the city administrator, and I would like to just hand that to him. I guess I would agree with that, because my thought is, I think it should be up to the people in whatever ward the vacancy is, is that it should be up to those people to decide who wants to speak for them. I, I, I think it's a little difficult to have a council appoint somebody, even though that's, there's a, it's in front of people, it's still the council's decision. You know, in light of what happened with the open forum, I think that was a little bit touchy. I mean, we had to come back and reexamine that decision that was made, because the people were, had a voice. They wanted to, to say something, and they wanted their voice heard by other people. And I think this is even a little bit more critical, because it has to deal with a vote. It has to deal with their vote. And I would support any type of an election, or I would support just waiting until the fall, when the other election is going to be held. I guess that's my feeling on it. Actually, council member Rachel's asked me about that, and I said, Scott, I feel that I think she'd be elected by the people. I don't have anybody that, that I would push out there right now and to recommend, because I think it's the people's choice. So that's my two cents worth, and that's what my thoughts are. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Al. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. A lot of the things you're saying, the, the points you bring up, I think are valid. I often, like, when I first was elected, this is where I come from on this particular issue. There was, I think, five of the eight council people back in 2004 had been appointed, right? And that's obviously not an ideal situation. We did go through it in 2015, and at that time, you know, the charter said that the appointment process for as long as I can, it's for a long time. That's not recent. It's the Charter Commission, you know, the city council back in 2015, 16, sent it to the Charter Commission for a process to clarify that, based on the process that was happened in 2015 and 16. I think it was December 15 and January 16, if I, something like that. So if I say 15 or 16, but anyway, I think the bottom line for me is that there's an election in November, so the people will decide on that seat. But in the meantime, I believe that the people need to be represented on the council. They need to have someone to speak for them. They need to have someone to act on their behalf. And so I don't disagree in theory at all with you. I think the people should decide. I think the people will decide. This is a process that wasn't laid out by any of the current people on the council or staff, but the Charter Commission, we've asked them to do that. And I think that if we were to change that, I think the time to do that is not during the middle of a seat that's open. I think that time to do that is after we follow the processes in place when we're faced with the situation that we're in front of now. That would be, that would be a strong belief of mine, that we follow the procedures that the people we've asked to put them in place have laid out. So that's, that's my two cents. But I appreciate your sentiments, Councilmember Cramire.
Can I just make a comment on this requirement that the council appoint is derived through the charter? And so it's not like we can just simply amend the charter without Charter Commission involvement. So, I mean, it's, what the process that they're proposing is going through the, what we call the initiative process, and that's to propose an ordinance to make a change in the city code. The question I have that I don't know the answer, I'd have to do a little bit more research, is whether the initiative could be utilized to change a charter provision, which is different than the rest of the city code. I don't know the answer to that, and I'll look into that a little bit. But, but the issue I see is the time involved and the length that this seat will continue to go unfilled. And that's up to you guys. I mean, that makes no difference to me. I mean, but I, but I, I think you have to keep that in the back of your mind, is the Charter Commission, when they looked at vacancies, felt, at least in my opinion, is that, that the council should be able to appoint someone to the seat, because that's the quickest possible route to ensure that constituents are being represented in their ward by an individual. So that's just my two bits of this matter that I do think you do have to bear in mind as well.
Yeah, and I, I understand that, Ralph. I think that's, you know, well put. I think there's some things that are a little bit murky, a little bit in some of that wording in the charter papers there. You know, and I think as far as it, to me, it really does come down to having the people decide who they want to speak for them and not we decide who speaks for them. And I, and we all know that's very important, and I know that that's what it is right now, or I think there's some, and I'd have to pull it up and look at that, but I think there was some wording in there, too, that was a little bit confusing, or I didn't quite get it or understand it. So maybe a little bit more research on that would be helpful to proceed with what has to be done.
Well, I mean, I'll just read it. The charter says, in the case of a vacancy, quote, "The council shall by resolution declare such vacancy to exist and shall forthwith appoint an eligible person to fill the same until the next regular municipal election."
I thought there was something else in another section that I may have came up with. I just have to research that, so that's my fault for not having that right now.
Any other thoughts? Tom?
Being a notorious budget hawk, what does it cost us to put on an election? I mean, I assume there's a cost with staff time and rounding up volunteers and...
What would be for a special for one ward, right?
There's an issue that the state only allows you to have a special election at certain times of the year. Just had one in May. The next one would be September, but there's a process for after August and all that type of thing, which would be June 4th, which would give us enough time. The next date that would be allowed after the August would be November, which is where the process we're going to be going through, starting in July. There's, there's certain dates, and we can't just hold a special election whenever we feel like. It has to be by state statute on certain dates and times. We spoke about this timeline in great detail over the last few weeks, and it would be nearly impossible unless you took all the action tonight to get everybody or to get somebody on for a special election in August. If that were the case, we could do it in conjunction with the primary election, but we would not have enough time, to be honest, to get it by the June 4th deadline.
So then in that case, we'd be electing, or electing someone that would be immediately up for reelection two months later, three months, whatever the, yeah. So, yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm certainly not ready to commit to that course of action tonight without any input from the Charter Commission. I'm, I'm in favor of... I'm in favor of going with the timeline that's been presented because, you know, if we, if we try to change this, we're just telling that charter commission, you know what? Yeah, thanks, but no thanks. We're going to do this our own way. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that.
In Your Honor, you know, the initiative process, so you have to change the charter if you're going to take that route because it's pretty clear. It uses the word "shall", and any attorney will tell you if you have the word "shall" instead of "may", you don't have flexibility there. To change that, even if Rolf determined that initiative process would do that, which I would be skeptical of, you still have to get the appropriate number of signatures, which is 10% of a ward. And then you have to have an election on the initiative to then change, potentially change the charter, which would be subject to the rules Lynn just talked about. There's no way to accomplish that. There's not, there's no possible way to accomplish that between now and November. So there's, it's not as easy as submitting five signatures on a piece of paper.
And also, the residents of that ward would not have that representation in that time either, whereas if we follow the schedule laid out, we can make that happen relatively quickly.
Plus, if there was an initiative, that's a citywide initiative. That's an election of all of the citizens to determine whether this would be an appropriate change to make. And again, again, you know, the charter commission would have some say in this. Again, I'm not saying that, that initiative applies to the charter. I just don't know the answer to that. I haven't researched that. It applies to everything else, but it doesn't apply to the first, you know, whatever, how many pages of the, of the, like, the first 30, 30 pages or so, 25 pages, but the remaining 2,000 pages it applies to.
I mean, in light of the fact that, like, we have something presented tonight that obviously I'm not sure anybody knew, is it worth that we take, you know, the two weeks for Rolf to research that and bring it back to, let's say, like, committee of the whole or something so that, you know, we have clarity? Because if they come back with the 260 signatures, or if there's 2,500 people in the, in the ward, I don't exactly how many there is, but...
It's going to be citywide. You can't base it on the ward population. You can't base it on the municipal population. The initiative is for the citizens, all of the citizens. It requires, it'll require 10% of the entire, you know, a petition to be sufficient will require that, that number of the entire city. So, I mean, it's, again, and even if, even if you have that, the charter commission, they may say, "We don't agree." It doesn't apply. Initiative doesn't, we, I have taken the position in the past where initiative has not applied to a rather big item that, the last time a petition for initiative came through. And, you know, it has to apply to the correct circumstances. And so, again, I don't have an opinion on that, but I'm a little bit skeptical as to whether you can change the charter in this fashion. I suspect you can because the people have reserved themselves significant powers. But that doesn't mean that the charter commission doesn't have a say in it either. And that may, and you know, and maybe, maybe this is a ripe question for the charter commission to study and come back with a recommendation. But again, I agree with Andrew is that the time that we're, I mean, if we had a couple of years to, to, to fill the position, fine. But I agree that the time constraints are just going to be very difficult if impossible to meet, given how close we are to an election.
I mean, then, because we are close to an election and we go through this process, then if we let the election be that time, that person could join the council on November the 7th. You know, I mean, because, you know, if you look at it, by the time this goes through, you know, it's July, August, you know, it's not that many months, you know?
You could, you could do that, and then appoint the person early. I would see no issue with that. It's just the question that I think you have to keep in the back of your mind is, is the residence of the ward going that long unrepresented? But then that's, you know, that's for you guys to weigh in. And I think it's an important consideration.
Well, I think the question tonight is, you know, we're declaring a resolution, declaring the vacancy, which is, yeah, Lynn, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say along with that, appointing early. Remember, there also is, they have to have all of their campaign finance reports and all of their filings done. There is 30 days by law they have to undergo, so you have to make sure all that paperwork is in place before you can issue an oath of office.
Again, another question that has, will have to be researched as to whether you could appoint in the interim or not. I mean, I get the campaign election laws require that disclosure, too. And that could be argued that that is for, you know, you do a temporary appointment, they will have to be re-sworn in in January. So it's not like it's a permanent appointment, you know? So...
I think, I think that's a good idea, Anthony.
These are interesting questions. And I'm not saying there's any right or wrong answers as we go down here. It's just interesting questions that...
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, Jim?
I personally think we don't want to go that long without a full council. I think we need to, to go through the process that's been outlined and get it done, have that person on the council. If they want to run again next time around in November, I think it's July they have to, have to say that they want to run. That's great. If not, somebody else will step up into that position. But I think we need somebody in that position to make us a full council.
Thanks, Jim. I think that's the, to me, that's the real question. And I would agree with you, Jim. I think the people need to be represented in that time. The charter, to me, is very clear. We declare vacancy, then we appoint someone to fill that position. If we're going to talk about special elections and stuff, that's a conversation for the charter commission and an initiative process that's not within the timeframes of anything we're talking about here. So I think you're right, Jim. That's the question, of whether or not we want to appoint someone in November or whether we want to appoint someone in June and give the people the opportunity to be represented in those, however many months that is, so...
In Your Honor, that's, that's the conversation that happened in 2017, right? I mean, they explored all those options. They adopted these improvements or updates to the charter, I believe, in 2018. You know, and the intent was, so we didn't find ourselves in a situation like this where we're down a member and having to try to scramble or to try to create a process or argue a process, you know, so we could get back to the business of the people in an orderly fashion and ensure that we have continuity of operations. So, you know, I, the entire purpose of that discussion in 2017 is what we're talking about right now. So I don't know why we're rehashing it. It's fair to do, but I think the circumstances weren't that, you know, and the language of the charter today, which we have to work with, is pretty clear that it's the duty of you guys as the council to appoint somebody until the next regular election.
Do you, do you recall when we, on the last time, did we do, like, I know we had several candidates? Did we, yeah, did we? Yeah, did we do like a, a sort of a, a secret sort of like vote initially to narrow it down to, can you remember how that process actually went?
If I remember correctly, there was, there was paper involved.
Yeah.
Right, there was a paper ballot that the council passed in.
So council members weren't sort of saying, well, I, you know?
Right, it was an open meeting, it was public, the public was, but there was a, it was a secret ballot, if I, if I remember correctly. Lynn, is that?
2009 for sure was a secret ballot, 2013?
15, 16, December, it was December, January, I think.
There was, I think, only two people that had five ballots. I think six people back in 2009. It was actually for the same ward, two different times.
Yeah. I'm remembering a few candidates, but that's here nor there.
I mean, I was trying to recall in my brains, and I think it was like, you know, so that we didn't put people on the spot as to, like, I didn't vote for Andrew, you know, but I voted for Ben type of thing.
Well, I think, Your Honor, I think the charter commission took exception to doing it that way, and that's why explicitly states it's in public. I think that's in reaction to how it played out in 2015, so I don't know.
But can't you have a, can't you have a private ballot in, in a public meeting? Do we have a public discussion about it? That was the biggest thing I thought, right? You just don't want to...
Again, another question that we'll have to look a little bit deeper into, but the question is, I don't, we don't call it secret ballots.
Right.
Something else we call a ballot to take the consensus of the council or something like that. So, and if that's where the, how the council wants to play out, we'll take another look at that, at that question. I mean, it isn't really an official ballot, but it may be something to, to let the council know where you're standing in your consensus.
Yeah, because I, I kind of thought that we did it to narrow it down to like the last two.
I think that's right.
So nice trip down memory lane.
I have a quick question. When we have the applicants here and we're able to ask them questions, can residents of that ward also ask them questions?
Completely up to the council, if you want to open it up to public questions. I would caution against that because you don't have control of what will be asked. And it's really your decision.
I'm trying to somewhat give them a little bit of a voice here because I feel that it's important that they, you know, can do that.
It's, it's going to be your call.
Sure.
As to how you want to conduct your interviews and whether you want to allow others to participate.
I think the last time we did not, I think it was just council members that asked questions, as I remember.
Yeah, I think, I mean, they still have, gave a kind of a narrative about who they were, why they were here, what they, you know, what they believed in, what they didn't believe in. And it was like a job interview.
Scott?
I think, as you said, Ben, the point that we've got tonight, we've been elected to carry out a responsibility, our responsibility is to declare the vacancy and go through this process. And that's what I think we ought to do, follow the process. And if we want to work out the details on what the charter says or doesn't say, that's for another time. That wouldn't, that's something that we're not going to be able to determine and should not determine at this point. So I think we ought to, in effect, call for the question and get this thing rolling. I think to Laura's question, if there's a member of the public that wants a certain question or a group of questions answered, as I've mentioned in the past, whether it was in regard to open form or anything else, any member of the public can contact any one of us at any time with an email or phone call and essentially funnel their question through one of us. So, I mean, if there's a question that somebody wants raised, it can be raised, and it can be addressed, and that would be the way to do it. I think that Al's questions about some of the procedure and whatnot here and having the people vote and all that, it's not an illegitimate question. But the process has been set up for us to fill the vacancy in a prompt way and at a reasonable cost of time and effort. And I think that we just need to move through the process.
Thanks, Scott. And I guess with that, I'll take your advice and I'll call for the question.
The other thing about this, how do we address, obviously, this, the concern of the citizens that did sign this thing? And should we, before we post the timeline, should we have an answer to how that is addressed?
That was going to be my comment, too. Because they're the ones who brought that up. And that's...
I'm not going to give an opinion on that right now. And because it's not fair to you and it's not fair to me.
No.
But I think that, I mean, if you wanted to, so what you're saying is not to...
I think declare the vacancy, but I think not, you know, whether we should publish something on the 25th or whatever, I don't know. You know, if you've got to come back with an opinion, we should, you know, maybe we push that down one day, you know, to the committee, after the committee of the whole.
But I do think, and I just to make sure we're reasonable, and as a citywide vote, I don't think there's any way to have a citywide vote on a measure and then, and then have a special election before November. I mean, this would be something that would be for the future, right? So I don't know that we want to let this hold us up. We respect it, they have the right to do this. We'll follow up with them, we'll give them the process. If they think that in 2027 this happens, they want a different process, completely fine, they have the right to go through that. But I don't think we need to unrealis, or, you know, be unrealistic as far as there's no way we can have a citywide vote for an initiative process to change a charter that then would allow us for a special election before November. It's just not feasible.
Yeah, and I don't even know what it says.
And I, and I agree, I mean, the timing is tough. And I do know that. But when somebody hands me something, I have to bring it to you guys. And...
And we owe it to them to follow up, for sure. And if they want to continue, they're, you know, absolutely. They have every right to do it. I wouldn't discourage them one bit, but just not for this process. It's not feasible, in my opinion. All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I guess it's just, I don't know that I'm clear. I mean, we declared the vacancy just now by resolution, but do we have the ability to move forward on the timeline presented? I hear that's what you're arguing for, but I'm not sure that the council is, is on that same wavelength. I just want to make sure that...
There's a, there's been a timeline presented. Would someone like to make a motion, we follow this timeline?
I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side?
Aye.
I'll cast a time vote, and that motion will carry, four to three. Under presentation of claims, we have claims tonight in the amount of $1,453,146.14. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director, Bill Sommore.
I will offer the resolution to Dave Wilson.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. A resolution is approved. There is no old...
Just, Your Honor, under, under old business, I just wonder, we spent a lot of money on, on logos. And documentation that we're given is like, you know, with the old city logo on it?
Yep, good point. And in our communication to council and to the public, we've said that June 1st is our rollout date. So all those things are happening behind the scenes, but great question.
Yep, all right.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. No new business this evening. Couple announcements, the groundbreaking for the Aquatic Center has been changed from tomorrow until May 28th at 4 o'clock.
Correct.
Is that correct? I got that right? So that's been postponed due to the weather. So groundbreaking at Roosevelt Park, the new Aquatic Center groundbreaking, 4 o'clock Tuesday, May 28th. May 30th, 4 o'clock as well, we're going to open the grand opening of the Splash Pad across the street. So everyone's welcome, hope the council is able to be there. Obviously, the public, there's a lot of activities. Gene, you've done, has done a great job of promoting that event. Anything you'd like to say about that event, Gene?
There's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have food trucks and entertainment. We've got lots of things donated by some businesses, and just the water's already been running. They've been testing it, and it's just, it's going to be great.
Thank you, Gene. June 3rd is our council work session, which everyone has been waiting for, the 2020 audit presentation.